This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins?
Here.
Clem Wazlaski?
Here.
Rich Patterson?
Here.
Mike Cristaldi? Jim Gallantino?
Here.
Margaret Guber Nalti? Craig Pomisano?
Yeah.
Despina Hess?
Here.
Remy Pelosi?
Here.
Joe DiGorolamo? Ron Grupo?
Here.
Mike Richman?
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Tom and Jim. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear nominations for chairman for next year.
I nominate Rich Patterson.
All right, I'll second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Do we need a motion or just a vote?
Oh, just a... All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear nomination for vice chairman.
I nominate Mike Richman.
I'll second.
All of... Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. I would like to hear a nomination to appoint a solicitor for 2019.
I'll make a motion and nominate Bill Manos.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I would like to hear a nom... Receive nominations for board secretary administrator for 2019.
I nominate Joe Manny Casey.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Don't blink as well.
At this time, we need to swear in reappointed members. Who are they?
All right, we have Chairman Patterson, Mike Richman, Guy, and Despina.
And Ron.
And Ron. I'm sorry, Ron. I'll do all at once. I gave you all the papers so you can kind of follow along. Just need you to raise your right hand. Aye. You choose state your name.
Aye, Richard Patterson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear... Let me just read it.
Yes.
Do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of planning board member according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right. Just need you to sign it. Make sure you get it to Joanna or to me. Thank you.
I would like to hear... Joanna. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions. Number one, 2019, meeting dates. Number two, 2019, Michael Fanagouakis. Number three, 2019, Marla and Richard Milgram.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. Before we start tonight, some cases have been adjourned. Mr.?
Yeah, there's going to be two matters that are going to be adjourned to the February 28th hearing. The first one is Christopher and Doris Pasani, 438 North Vendome Avenue. That's block 623, lot 18. So if you're here for that application, this is your official notice that it's going to be heard on February 28th, 2019. The applicant will not be required to re-advertise or renotice. The second one is the application of Andrew Ozer, which is 36 West Drive, block 201.04, lot 69. That again is going to be heard on February 28th, 2019, 6:30 PM in this room, and the applicant will not be required to republish or renotice. So both of those are on 6:30 next month, February 28th. So if you're here for that, that is your official announcement.
Let the record show, Mike Cristaldi is present. We're going to hear a little bit out of order. Number 13 will be the first case. Talib Christopher Holloway, block 524.02, lot 5C000A, in the TF District. Degranace variance for setback for second floor deck. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren, would you be signed? Sworn in, please.
Mr. McLaren, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, board chairman, board members. My report is based on the application of Talib Christopher Holloway, 304 North Wilson Avenue, second floor, block 524.02, lot 5, within the two-family zone, the TF zone. It's an existing structure. Excuse me? Yes?
Mr. Cristaldi is recusing himself in this case.
Where were we? I don't know. Okay. It's an existing two-family home with a... An existing first-floor porch. The applicant wants to build a second-floor deck, the same size and location as the first-floor porch. Requires two variances. The first variance is front yard setback to the porch because you're expanding a non-conforming 11.83 feet is required, 7.7 feet is proposed. Side yard setback to the deck on the second floor again is an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Eight feet is required, 7.1 feet is proposed, and that matches the width of the house. My comments are very limited. I'm not going to go through them. This is a pretty basic case. They actually started the construction of the deck. We found out about it. They came in for a permit, and then they didn't have a front yard setback survey, so that determined that they were non-compliant. However, there is a deck next door that was built that sticks further out, and if you factored that into the equation, it actually gets... It's not part of the equation, so therefore they're here because of the setback variances. So I'm not going to go any further on that, and I'll turn it over to the appli.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations on your reappointment. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Talib Christopher Holloway. Chris is next to me, here to the right. As Mr. McLaren had indicated, the subject property, I'm sure you've all seen it, has a fairly nice-sized first-floor porch. Property owner simply wants to do the exact same thing on the second floor. As Mr. McLaren also pointed out, directly next door, there is a house closer to... And it should be as well, to the front setback with regard to a newly constructed deck. Mr. McLaren also correctly pointed out that if that house were included, the dimensions of this become still a variance, but a little bit easier to swallow. It's more of a technical variance really than anything else because the lot coverage remains exactly the same. There are no changes with regard to anything to the house itself. The footprint's not changing. We're not adding any additional livable square footage. The house is itself, the structure, no real change at all, other than the fact that this porch is going to mirror what's below it. The first-floor property owner is in agreement, because it's a two-story, two-floor, two-unit owner structure, to go ahead and have this construction done. Chris spoke to his downstairs neighbor. Downstairs neighbor sent me a note. He has no problem with this. I think it improves the neighborhood fairly well. It kind of complements the house directly next door, but it is a variance because the property, even with the first floor, is non-compliant. So as Mr. McLaren pointed out, we are exacerbating an existing nonconformity. With regard to the side yard, it's a .9-foot exacerbation. With regard to the front yard, it's zero if you count the first-floor deck. If not, we're really looking for variance of about three and a half to four feet, depending if you count or don't count the property in question. Chris, I'm just going to ask you to come up. Get sworn in, please, by Mr. Manos.
Just state your name and an address for the record, and I'll swear you in.
Sure. My primary residence... Or my second home. Okay. Talib Christopher Holloway. My second home is here in Margate 304 North Wilson Avenue, and I... My primary residence is 653 Bridge Street in Schwenksville, Pennsylvania.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Chris, you heard the testimony of Mr. McLaren earlier.
Would you... You choose a mic, please.
No, I'm sorry. You can take that.
Okay.
You heard the testimony of Mr. McLaren and what I said a little bit of a preliminary introduction about the property. You recently became owner of the second floor, correct?
Correct.
And you desire to put a second-floor deck on just as your first-floor neighbor has now, correct?
Correct.
And there's no other changes that you're proposing inside the house, correct?
Correct.
One thing Mr. McLaren did point out, the plans themselves don't show access to the deck from the house. Do you plan on putting a door there in front?
Correct. There's five windows across the front of the house. The third window from either the right or left, however you look at it, the one that's in the middle would be a door.
So if you're looking at the house straight away, there'll be a door in the middle and then two windows on either side?
Correct.
Okay. And there's no other changes, so the board's aware of this, that you plan on making with regard to the house? The interior layout, the first floor is not going to change, your floor is not going to change at all, just the porch, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaren, that's basically it.
What's there now? It's like already there, and you're just going to call it a deck? I mean...
No, 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 there's nothing.
Oh, there's no roof on the first-floor deck?
It's just open.
Oh, it's open. I'm sorry. Okay.
So you've got first floor, you walk in, second floor has nothing overhanging. This would just complement the first floor. It would cover the first floor, and obviously we want to make sure that the first-floor neighbor wasn't opposed to that. He's not... His deck will now have a porch or deck above it, and there's really not much more to it, but it does require a variance based on the city's code, so, you know, we're here to make sure that everything's done correctly.
Eric, I think the problem we have is that you're really not showing us much.
There's not much... And I understand...
No, I'm saying even just... Basically, I mean, we just see a couple dotted lines and a square and a thing that says proposed door. Is it going to be an open deck?
It'll be...
What kind of railing is going to be on it?
Talk about the deck, Chris.
Sure. So, correct. So no roof above the deck, just an open deck with vinyl railings, white railings around. Basically, the bottom porch has white railings going around it, so it's going to look exactly... The railings are going to be identical to what's on the first floor.
So Eric, if you look at my report, the last page, the top picture shows the bottom porch as it was before, was demoed for the second-floor construction. That's going to be replicated above with probably four columns.
Correct.
Yes, you removed the railing, and you're going to put it back on the first floor, correct?
Correct.
And you're not proposing any curtains or anything else that would block any of your neighbors' light air and open space, correct?
Correct.
So it would be, as Mr. McLaren's report points out, deck, open white slatted railing, and nothing above it.
Nothing above it.
And what kind of a deck would it be? Is it a closed deck? So he has a...
Uh, yes. So underneath, it will be... Give the bottom neighbor cover for rain, so I believe underneath there will be...
So he'd have a basic roof over his porch?
Exactly.
Is it going to be a fiberglass deck?
Uh, trunks.
Trunks. So it'll be open, and water will rain through it?
With the exception of what will go underneath to give the neighbor cover, there'll be gutters that go underneath to drain the water off.
I think the question is...
No, that didn't make sense at all.
Right.
Well, they have a new... They have this new thing now where you can use like a trunks, like a deck, and they have like these plastic things that go underneath between the joists, and it actually drains the water out to the front of the deck. I just saw that.
So the deck's going to be impervious?
Are you familiar with that?
Right.
Are you familiar with it?
It's new, Rick.
Yeah, it just came out.
Have you seen it?
I guess I'll see it.
You know what I'm... Not familiar with this.
I am not familiar with it.
No, I am. It just... It looks like a vinyl soffit under your deck, except it kind of pitches a little bit, so it'll pitch the water better front of the house.
And what secures the vinyl soffit underneath so it doesn't come down on you?
It's nailed to the...
What secures it?
It's nailed to the joist. Yeah. Yeah. It's made by... It's like made by Asa, so... Yeah. I'm assuming that's what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it going to be columns? I think that's what I was scratching for.
Four columns, he said.
How are those columns going to relate to the existing fence when you're all up?
So they'll be thicker columns, I believe.
Six by six?
Yeah, in the report there, six by six columns, four of them going across.
Are they going to replace the posts with the rolled fence?
They will.
Do you plan on wrapping those posts with white vinyl?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exactly.
So if you seen the house next door, which is also in...
Same contractor as well.
Same contractor?
Yes.
Oh, good. The house next door already did the same thing. It would almost match exactly with the posts coming up and the open rails in front.
And you noticed one of Roger's comments was about the two street trees. You agree to put the two street trees in?
Yeah.
Okay. And a proper number of shrubs.
Right. Unless the board has any questions, I don't have too much more.
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public like to comment or any questions? Public portion is closed. Any further comments or questions from the board? Mr. Man... Mr. Manos, would you read a motion, please?
Sure. This is a C variance application, and it looks like you also need a waiver from submitting the 200-foot map, Eric, but someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief for front yard setback to the porch of 7.7 feet.
Real quick, I do have a comment on that. I received two surveys with two different setbacks. I'm using Jim Bonney's one I want to submit. There's a prior one that shows 8.5 feet.
Which one's better for us?
You don't get to pick it, too, so...
Um, whatever we submitted, Mr. McLaren, I know that we... There's a calculation from Paul Kelling.
Right. His setback calculation is separate, different than what the...
Yeah. Well, what we submitted is what we're going to stick with.
You're going to match the bottom?
Correct.
Porch?
Right.
So you're going to be consistent with that. So let's use the Bonney information for the setback?
Is that... Is that...
Or, I mean, the setback information provided by Kelling, it's a 7.7.
7.7 and then 7.1 on the side, correct?
Correct.
And as a condition, if it pleases the board, we can say this porch will not go out any further than the downstairs porch, so it'll match exactly what's beneath it.
Okay, so...
So my variance, as written, that's what they're asking?
Correct.
For their variance.
And then you calculated the prevailing is 11.83 without the subject porch being included and 10.83 with it being included. Is that correct? Okay, so it's... The C variances are for front yard setback to the porch of 7.7 feet, where the prevailing front yard setback's 11.83 feet without the subject porch included and 10.83 with it being included, and a side yard setback to the porch of 7.1 feet, where eight feet is required. There's also a waiver from the submission of an area map showing all properties within 200 feet. The conditions will be the applicant will provide for two street trees, will provide the required number of shrubs, and will match the second-floor deck or porch to the front and side yard setbacks of the existing first-floor porch, and all other conditions and representations made.
Applicant accepts those, Mr. Manos.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Jim.
Tom Collins?
Took us a little while to get through your plans here, but looking at the property today, looking at the plans as we understand them now, it's very de minimis. You're really not cutting into air, open space, or light, except for a little bit to the neighbor underneath, and you couldn't build it without their permission anyway. I don't see any negative impacts to the neighborhood. Adding the trees actually will be aesthetically an improvement to the neighborhood, and I wish you a lot of luck. I vote in favor.
Well, if this project proceeds as described, it'll be an architectural improvement to the property, which I think more than makes up for the variances that they need. But I do want to comment, this is probably the worst presentation I've ever seen. I don't... I can't imagine anybody even bothering to submit something like this, but that doesn't take away from the work itself. It just abuses this board, but I'll vote for the project. Thank you.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote for the project for the same reasons mentioned by the two prior members.
Jim Gallantino?
I think the applicant is showing a hardship. I grant the approval for the two setbacks.
Craig Pomisano?
Your property didn't have a deck. Everybody else's property has a deck, and you're matching the front one downstairs. That's a good thing. I approve it.
Despina Hess?
I also vote in favor... I also vote in favor of the application as to the two variances being requested, the front yard setback and the side yard setback. My biggest issue would have been the downstairs neighbor, and they're in favor of the project. I believe that they can both be granted without causing any substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, I think you're going to add to the value of the entire neighborhood because it improves the look of both your house as well as the remainder of the block, and it's less of an impact if you just look at the neighbor to your... I guess it would be your left if you're staying on your porch. Yours comes out further. You're keeping the same footprint, and the fact that it's going to be open, I see nothing but positives, so I vote in favor of the application.
Mike Richman?
I'm going to concur with Despina. I think it's going to definitely be an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood, and...
You turn your mic on. I can hear you.
Yes, I vote yes.
The application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you all.
Eric, would you like to sign?
I will sign that.
Mr. Cristaldi, are you back with us now?
Yes.
Okay. Next case is Raymond O'Connor, 100 North Rumsen Avenue, block 319, lot 24, in the S-30 District. Degranace variance for front yard setback to porch and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, board chairman, board members. My report is based on the application of Raymond O'Connor. As the chairman mentioned, 100 North Rumsen Avenue, block 319, lot 24, within the S-30 Zone FEMA Zone elevation eight. That require first-floor bottom would be eight plus three, or 11. Zoning height is measured from base load plus four, which would be 12. Seeking C variances as a planning and zoning report. This is a substantial benefit variance. Variances are as follows. Front yard setback for the porch on Rumsen Avenue, where 12 feet is a required minimum. 9.1 feet exists, and 9.1 feet is proposed. This is an expansion of existing non-conforming setback. Front yard setback, second-floor deck, Rumsen Avenue, where 12 feet is required, the same request, 9.1 feet exist, 9.1 feet is proposed. This is a house lift, and if it wasn't for these two variances, they all non-conforming issues would be grandfathered in because they're by state law. However, it's another front yard setback issue. The architectural plans address all the lot coverage, landscape coverage issues. They're addressing the street trees. There is an existing fence. I want testimony... I would like to hear testimony that the fence will be removed and no fence will block the driveway. Even the access from Winchester Avenue, which is not permitted by our ordinance, is grandfathered in, as that is not changing. A checklist has not been submitted, but a waiver should be requested. I would recommend that that waiver be granted, as everything has been supplied, that is required. Existing first-floor porch is currently fully enclosed and will be open air on all three sides. Again, this is a C2K variance, a lot of hardship variance. The recommended street trees would be the Sycamore Maple, as the other trees on that block and along Winchester Avenue in both directions are Sycamore Maples. And that concludes my report at this time.
Roger. Does he need to be sworn in?
No, we swore him out. We already swore him in.
No, no.
Oh, the applicant, yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Raymond O'Connor, 519 Dawson Street, Morristown, New Jersey.
You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, for seeing me. Last year, we had a water main pipe break in the second story of our home, and it just wrecked the whole house, and it's completely gutted at this point. In putting it back together, we wanted to take the second story that was just a finished attic and make it a full second story. In doing that, we were being required to raise the house, which is fine, and we would like to increase the front porch aesthetically. I think it fits into the neighborhood much better with some of the newer homes and such that are going up. It would also give us a lot more room out on the front porch and the second-floor porch, if you can imagine. It's kind of tight right now, but we're just asking for a variance to approve it, and I brought my builder with me today, and so if we have any building questions, we can ask him.
So you're raising it 2.09 feet? Is that all?
No, I think it's higher than that.
Existing first-floor elevation 99, and you're going to 12.
Okay.
Right? 99 to 12.
Yeah.
You go two feet, first floor. Anyway, that doesn't matter so much. The curb cut, you have to enlarge that curb cut?
I don't... I do not believe we have to enlarge the curb cut. No, we're not changing the footprint of the house at all.
The curb cut that's existing now services one driveway. You're making two driveways. Is that right?
I don't believe so. It's already existing.
You're showing vehicles side by side in the driveway.
And that's how it currently is, I believe.
It is. Two-car driveway.
Yeah, the curb cut looked awful small. It looked like a one-car curb cut. I don't have a photo of it.
If he speaks, we'll swear him in, sure. Has he consulted? Tom?
I just wanted to utilize...
Okay. Can we swear him in?
Yeah, let's swear him in, just in case you need to refer to him. Let's make him swear.
I'm just concerned about using both driveways.
Okay.
Just state your name and business address for the record.
Todd Arsenal Seaboard Building Restoration, 200 Bellhaven Avenue, Linwood, New Jersey.
Did you spell your last name? You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
Now that I think about it, I think you're correct. I think it's a single...
Yes, it is.
Single, yes.
Yes, it is. Is there a fence along that side of the property now?
There is, yes.
Because something in my mind makes me think that fence was a problem there.
It may have been, and Mr. McLaren made reference to taking it down, and we will agree to taking it down and as well putting in the sycamore trees.
Okay. But the curb cut has to be addressed, correct?
Yes. Are you planning on making that a double wide curb cut?
If I'm being requested to do it, absolutely.
You're not?
Okay.
What is your plan?
We did not plan on making it a double, no.
So you can still maneuver three cars in there with the one curb cut?
Absolutely, and to be honest with you, we don't even use it as a driveway.
What?
We don't use it as a driveway. We just park out front.
But you will be using it as a driveway, correct?
You have three cars listed in there.
Okay, yes.
The fence will be gone.
I need it on the record, Craig.
That's fine. Yeah, I see it. That's how it exists now. There's a one curve, but there's room to move inside.
Yes. Keep in mind, if you make that any wider, 20 feet is regulated, and you need a variance because curb cuts aren't allowed on Winchester Avenue on corner properties.
Okay.
I think you have enough room to maneuver with the one driveway, so I'm not too concerned about that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the Board? Any other questions? Do you have anything further?
Nothing further for me, sir.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment or have any questions? Public portion is closed.
Jimmy, was this a substantial improvement issue?
Yes.
Okay. So he's raising it, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connor, you heard Mr. McLaren's comments, and you're in agreement with everything, everything in his report?
I am, absolutely. The trees and... The moving fence and the trees, definitely.
All right, anything else from the Board? Leo, would you read a motion, please?
Sure. We need a motion for C variance relief for a front yard setback to the porch along Rumsen Avenue of 9.1 feet, where 12 feet is required, and a front yard setback to the second floor deck along Rumsen Avenue for the deck expansion of 9.1 feet, where 12 feet is required. There's also a waiver from the submission of an application checklist.
Actually, Leo, they do have one. I did not have it. It's that waiver's...
They have the application checklist, so they don't need that waiver. That goes away, and the conditions will be, everything contained in Mr. McLaren's report to January 30th, which include, but is not limited to, they'll remove that fence in the driveway, and they'll plant the four street trees that are required. Someone needs to make the motion.
All right, second.
Mike and Jimmy.
Tom Collins?
Actually, again, this is a really very, very low impact on the neighborhood. It's very de minimis. You're increasing our ratings by elevating your house. You're complying with your flood FEMA, which is a good thing. We're adding landscape, treescape, also an asset to the neighborhood. The couple variances you need are so miniscule, it's crazy. And I'm glad that you're not expanding onto Winchester with double drives and causing problems. So I think this would be a good thing for Margate, and I vote in favor of it.
Clem Wazlowski?
The overall improvements to this property certainly far exceed any possible negative impact that the telephone ringing in the middle of the hearing would have.
That a yes?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I always forget. There's little or no negative impact on this, and the improvements are vast. I vote in favor.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote in favor, again, for the same reasons as the two prior Board Members. I just wanted to add one more comment and commend the architecture of the house. This Board really stresses for corner houses to make it look like two fronts. For some reason, people don't like to do it. I wouldn't want to live in a house that way, but this house really meets that requirement, and it's very nice from the Winchester Avenue and Rumsen Avenue, so I commend you on that.
Mike Cristaldi?
I agree with Rich Patterson on that, what you're saying about the architecture on it. And I also want to comment that Jimmy's trying to get us to meet C Isles' community rating system. And bringing the house into compliance, I think, is really an upgrade for the neighborhood and everybody concerned. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I applaud the applicant, and I think the architect was, I agree with Rich, he's a good architect. And I approve, I think he showed a good hardship.
Craig Pomisano?
Very nice improvement to the house it's got now, and very nice job by the architect. I love the way they did the existing for each side of the house, and then they showed you what it's going to look like, and it's a real nice improvement to the property. I vote in favor.
Mike Richmond?
I agree with all the other Board Members. I think it's a vast improvement to the house and to the neighborhood, and I'm going to vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Ray, will you come sign, please?
I will, thank you. Thank you.
Next case is... I'm sorry.
Yeah, would everyone turn the sets of plans on this case into Roger after the meeting or right now if you want to?
The ones we just approved. The ones we just did, this.
Yes.
Just do it now, and you won't forget. Yeah, just the plan. It's a plan, Stan. We just saved the sycamore. Yes, I'll take it. Okay?
Thank you.
Next case is PMJ Real Estate Developers LLC, 117 North Gladstone Avenue, Block 307.02, Lot 43, in the S-25 District to grant subdivision variances, lot width and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
And just before we get to Mr. McLaren's report, I just want to make a couple things clear for the record. I did receive a letter, which Mr. Goldstein's aware of, yesterday from an attorney named Melanie Levann. She represents Lauren Kane, who I believe is the next door neighbor, and she basically raised two issues. One was with the notice that was provided. She said it was defective. I looked at that. It's my legal determination to notice is sufficient, it's legally proper, and there's nothing wrong with it. The second part of it, she requested an adjournment, which I said I would present to the Board. It's a discretionary call by the Board. Mr. Goldstein chimed in and said he wants to go forward, so he's not agreeing, and the Board has discretion here, just considering all the factors, whether...
Do they have a reason?
Whether they would like to resign. And I'll read that part. So she goes into the notice issue, which that's a legal issue. I already told her I believe it's fine. But she says, at the end of her letter, "If the notice is found sufficient, I respectfully request on behalf of Ms. Kane that the matter be adjourned nonetheless, in order to allow Ms. Kane time to review the application, the plans, any professional review letters, and consult her own professionals to determine how her interests as a neighboring property owner will be impacted by this application, particularly as it relates to traffic, noise, drainage, and aesthetics. Although the notices were timely mailed, Ms. Kane did not receive the certified mailings until January 23, 2019. Thank you for your consideration." So I wanted that in the record. There can be discussion on it if someone wants to entertain a motion.
Mr. Manos, one thing I do want to point out, the Kanes are represented actually tonight.
Oh, okay.
They have a different attorney now, so...
Oh, okay. Are you withdrawing that request for the matter to be adjourned?
At this point, I believe that the fact that the matter is under the notice requirements, as long as it's mailed out within 10 days, that's satisfactory. So I think at this point, we're withdrawing that objection at this point.
Okay. And the way that we'll probably proceed in less circumstances dictate otherwise, Mr. Goldstein will put on his presentation, and then during the public, we'll let you go first and then anyone else from the public.
But Leo, may we have his name?
Yeah, we...
Do you want me to put my neck, would you like me to put my appearance on the record?
Sure, you put your appearance on the record, Eric will, and then we'll go to Mr. McLaren.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Learned Professionals, Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary. Michael Ficetti from the Law Firm of Montgomery McCracken Walker and Rhodes in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. We also have offices in Linwood and Philadelphia. Thank you. So we don't have to burn off those documents?
No. In light of the fact that he's representing Ms. Kane, which is the same person who requested the adjournment, no. I think we can proceed.
All right, Mr. McLaren?
Good, Mr. McLaren.
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. My report is based on the application of TMG Construction LLC, 117 North Gladstone Avenue, Block 307.02, Lot 43, within the S-25 zoning district. FEMA Zone AE elevation nine, based on the effective firm. Required minimum first floor is nine plus three, or 12 to the bottom of the floor. Height is measured from plus four, or if they provide a garage underneath, it's eight plus one for the height. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to subdivide one existing oversized lot into two lots of equal width, but the widths do not meet the minimum required by ordinance. Two single-family dwellings with no variances are proposed and shall meet all design standards and FEMA requirements, as well as all bulk requirements. Seven lots on the same side of the block have lots with 35 feet. The adjacent block to the south has a fair amount of lot width equivalent to 35 feet being proposed. The properties are located in the S-25 zoning district. However, the lot areas and lot widths are governed by Schedule B1. The zoning chart is on bottom of Page 1 and top of Page 2. As you can see, the documents reviewed, I do want to highlight one of the other documents is the engineering report from Renner King of Vernix. Again, it's based on the checklist items. There's a bunch of waivers that have been requested, and I leave it up to the applicant to go over each one. Page 3, again, the variances, there's two variances because there was two lots being created. Lot width, proposed lot 4301, whereas a minimum lot width for Zone S-25 is 40 feet, and 35 feet is proposed, based on Schedule B1. Second variance, lot width, proposed lot 43.02, whereas a minimum lot width for Zone S-25 is 40 feet and 35 feet is proposed, again, Schedule B1. Now, waiver is requested. My comment is a CD engineer's report. My comments are as follows. The engineer's report and any comment shall be included in any approval. The setbacks on the subdivision plan show what could be proposed. Any combination of setbacks may be permitted, provided that the minimum setback is five feet and the combined setback for side yards is 13 feet. The improvements will require to be demolished in order for the subdivision to be filed. All bulk requirements are being met. The pool equipment on the architectural plans will need to be relocated or if variances required. I did speak to the attorney about that, and they will relocate those pool equipment if the pools are even built. The building height is shown to be 30 feet from first floor, 30 feet is allowed with conditions, the conditions are being met. Prior to any development after the subdivision, a grading plan shall be provided. Any deed restrictions and all covenants, easements, et cetera, shall be submitted and noted on the plan. Apparently, according to the plan submitted, there's nothing there. The subdivision must comply with the MAP filing law requirements as mentioned in the engineer's report. Indicate on the plans are trash and recycling specifically will be stored. I presume it's in the storage area below the main floor. From a plan perspective, 35-foot wide lots are prevalent on this side of the street. At this location, it could be determined as to be the appropriate width. From a density perspective, the minimum lot size is 2,500 square feet for the zone, so the recommended density would be one dwelling unit per 2,500 square feet, or 17.42 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density would be one dwelling unit per 3,450 square feet, or 12.62 dwelling units per acre, which is considerably less dense than what is permitted on a lot area basis. Removal of the on-street designated ADA space needs to be requested from the governing body. I forwarded this request to the governing body as well, but it has to be a formal request from the applicant. The proposed tree trees shall be within the governor's strip or behind the sidewalk closing to the street. Then, as shown on the architectural plans, the species preferred is, again, the sycamore maple, as that's prevalent on this street. Again, this is a C2 criteria case, not a hardship case, and the applicant shall provide testimony that references that and supports that. Again, I'm not going to go through my recommendations at this time, but I'm sure the applicant, Eric, has reviewed those, and I defer that testimony to the applicant now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant, PMG Construction LLC. Part of getting into the meat of the application, as Mr. McLaren correctly pointed out, what we have here is an isolated 70-foot wide lot in a sea of 35-foot wide lots. We went back and checked the history and the title. We're not quite sure how that occurred, but it has occurred. So as you can see on the map in front of you, you've got 30-foot wide lots that face Gladstone. This lot actually faces Monmouth, and these lots...
Speaker, please.
And the lots on the bottom of the page face Winchester and partially face Gladstone.
Could you point out the 35-foot lots, please?
35-foot lot 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, across the street. You also have 1, 2, 3, which are directly across the street from the subject property. There's an odd configuration at the bottom here that's actually quite an anomaly, but this entire block at some point was set up by the Margate City planners to be 35 feet wide. 70 here, 70 here, but the remainder of the lots that surround are all undersized of record. Interesting to note, this proposed subdivision would create two lots that are about 1,000 feet greater than is required in the S-25 zone, which is also quite an anomaly in Margate. 2,500 square feet versus 3,500 square feet. Each lot, as proposed, would comply in line with the three lots towards the ocean and three lots additionally towards the bay, with another 35 on the other side of Lot 39. The proposal here is to build two, by right properties, homes, single-family homes, that do not need variances. As part of this application, the applicant has said, to the extent this is granted, those properties would be deed restricted so that at no point would homes larger than would be by right in the zone be allowed to be built. So understanding the Board is always concerned about having increased size of properties on existing lots, there will never be a house built on these proposed lots that doesn't meet with Margate's existing zoning criteria. We're not going to come back at a future date and say, we got your variances, now we're going to build slightly bigger homes. A deed restriction will be filed, so it can't happen in the future. We can't come back before the Board unless the deed restriction were released. And that's important because that very rarely, if ever, happens. The homes that are designed by Terry Cummings that you have in front of you are consistent with a 35-foot wide lot, not a 40-foot wide lot, which is a requirement in the S-25 zone. So again, to the extent these variances are granted, the two smaller lots will contain two much smaller homes. If one house were built on this lot, it would be greatly in excess of what is surrounding it, and it would have a mass that probably doesn't fit well into the neighborhood, but it would also be a by right house. The applicant has been quite considerate in trying to lessen the effect of light, air, and open space by designing... and open space by designing two separate homes where you'll have now an additional corridor down the middle of light air and open space through, where if you built one house across, there would only be the existing corridor between Lot 42 and Lot 43, and then between Lot 43 and 45. As to background of the proposal, Arthur Chu is a licensed professional planner who prepared this map. He's here tonight to be sworn in and give testimony as to the justifications for the variances based upon the pattern of neighborhood development historically along this block. Mr. Chu, please take the microphone and be sworn in. I'll have you qualified as an expert.
Just state your name and business address for the record, please.
Arthur Chu, 130 West Seaview Avenue, Lynwood, New Jersey.
And that's C.H.
C.H.E.W.
E.W. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, Board.
Mr. Chu, just in order to be qualified, please, if you don't mind, inform the Board of your licensed professional planner status and your education so you can be accepted as an expert.
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in science from Princeton University. I have a professional engineering license, which I've had for over 14 years. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, which I've had for over 10 years.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you to accept Mr. Chu as an expert in the field of engineering and professional planning to give testimony tonight.
We'll accept his credentials.
Mr. Chu, if you don't mind, walk us through the proposed plan and why this fits into the category as a C-2, so we could obtain a variance to cut this lot in half.
Yes, as you can see by the zoning plan we put together, we stitched the two zoning maps together. Gladstone has predominantly 35-foot lots in this block and also in the lots, in the block closer to the ocean and also to the bay. As you can see, when the planners originally lined out the tax map, they actually skipped over the lot numbers for the two 70-foot lots, looking like maybe at some point they would be subdivided out and the lot numbers would fit right in.
Excuse me. Eric, you said there was nine 35-foot lots and there's 22 total lots, so the predominant lots would be bigger than 35 feet, correct?
Not on this side of the street, Mr. Chairman. On this side, it's either all 35s or 70s.
And across the street?
Across the street, there are three 35s.
Right, so there's 22 lots on that block and there's nine of them that are 35. Right.
And in Block 308 or in Block 307?
Both sides of Gladstone Avenue.
That's correct. On the other side of Gladstone, there are 50s.
Not.
I'm sorry. On the other side of the block.
I'm talking about Gladstone Avenue, odd and even sides. Yes.
Yeah, on Gladstone, we have, on this side, there's 10 lots at front on Gladstone, one that does not down here. Out of the 10 that front on, seven out of the 10, so 70% of them.
Right.
Are 35-foot. Across the street, you have 10 lots here.
And three of them.
Out of those, four out of 10 are less than 40 feet. You have three 35s and you have a 20-foot.
Is there a house on that 24?
There is a, it's a 20-foot lot, there is a house on that lot.
On the 24-foot, okay.
Yeah.
And I'm going to call that A1 tax map, tax map exhibit, just for the record.
That's a combination of the map lines here. I stitched the two together to allow us to talk about it.
Can you tell me what sizes, 18, 19, and 20 across the street? 18, 19, 21?
We have 48, 47, and 50, and then a 40, and a 40, and a 20.
48, 47, and 50 across the street?
48, 47, 50, 40.
All right, okay.
So, you have four in a row that do comply.
Play size lots.
Yeah. You actually have five in a row that do comply with the ordinance, and three of them are above the minimum requirement. But you have, when you go up the whole block and when you continue up going three blocks in a row, you see predominantly the houses are 30-foot, 35-foot wide lots, smaller houses, instead of where you go on the other streets over here, it's predominantly 50-foot. This whole block is all 50s, all 50s. So, it's, and this is zoned 40-foot wide here. It seemed to me that maybe when they came up with the zoning ordinance, that they took the average of the two and got to the 40-foot, when you have predominantly 35s here and you have some, a lot of 50s over here.
Yeah, one street is 67 feet wide and the other is 50-foot wide?
This is 50-foot, this is 67.
So, it's a more narrow street over there.
More narrow street. And this is a much narrower street. The 50-foot seems more typical, the 67 is a little bit an anomaly.
Mr. Chu, the house that currently exists has a fair amount of impervious coverage, correct?
Yes.
And that house has zero off-street parking spaces, correct?
That is correct.
And the new two homes that are proposed have three off-street parking spaces per house, correct?
Yes.
And the house directly next door at 115 also has zero off-street parking, correct?
Yes.
So, we'd be, assuming that these two homes are built, increasing the off-street parking on the order of magnitude?
Yes.
Okay.
And if they only had built one house on the property, it would, assuming they put six bedrooms, it would only be four off-street parking spots as opposed to the six that are being proposed with these two homes. So, it's a benefit to the neighborhood.
How many bedrooms are in the two homes together?
Two homes together, 10 bedrooms.
And would we be losing street parking from two new curb cuts, then? Because if there isn't any existing, we're creating two new curb cuts, aren't we?
Yes, you would be.
So, we're losing approximately how many streets parks, would you say?
If there, it would be two spots.
One spot for each?
One spot for each curb cut.
Would it be fair to say, in your professional opinion, that the subdivision presents a better planning alternative than building one single-family house on the property, which would be much, much larger in scale?
Yes, in my professional opinion, the two 35-foot lots fit more in with the neighborhood on Gladstone than one single 70-foot wide, large house.
Well, are you talking, it fits in with lot size or house size? Because the other houses are single-story bungalows, so it kind of won't fit in with the neighborhood.
Well, that's, on the older homes, you're correct, but right across the street on a 35-foot lot is a very, is a larger house that's built there. So, it would fit in with the newer house. The other aspect to get to realize is the, most of the bungalows on the street don't comply with the current FEMA regulations. So, by putting this new house in, it's going to be higher up, it's going to be, it's going to look bigger because it's complying with the flood zone. So, that's a benefit to the community, too. The other benefit to the community is that with two houses, you're going to be, have more affordable houses, which, they'll be more affordable in comparison to the one larger home. So, you may have, you have a better opportunity for families or year-round residents to move into those homes.
Would it be fair to say, in your opinion as a licensed professional planner, that the plan being presented now presents a better concept for appropriate population density?
Yes, the, because of the lot size and how everything is laid out, the density for the lots match more in with the zone plan than the current 70-foot wide lot.
So, notwithstanding Margate's requirement to have a 40-foot wide lot, based upon the pattern of development on this particular street, this particular block of Gladstone Avenue, two 35-foot wide lots present a better, more consistent planning alternative than one 70-foot wide lot?
Yes, it's more in with the zone plan, with the density of the master plan for the city.
And we'd be creating two flood-compliant homes with parking underneath and no additional variances necessary for the construction of the plans that Ms. Cummings has designed, correct?
Yes, that is correct. We're also, with two homes being facilitated there, as you pointed out earlier, it will allow for 25, 26 feet of space on setbacks, where if only one home was built there, it would be 22 feet of space. So, it's allowing for more light air in the community.
And the two homes that would be proposed, based upon your examination of the neighborhood, would fit better into this particular block than one much, much larger house, correct?
Yeah. As the newer homes, the two smaller homes fit more in line with the new home across the street that's 35-foot. While Chairman pointed out that they don't really fit in with the bungalow style, but that's not what the newer homes are that are being built within the community.
Well, right, no one's building a non-flood compliant, non-side yard setback compliant, overly impervious lot, I mean, a house on an existing lot. You couldn't do that if you wanted to, correct?
Correct.
Those bungalows, as they exist today, couldn't be built pursuant to Margate zoning code and FEMA's code, correct?
Yes.
Now, let's talk a little bit about the house that could be built if you did one. That house would be as high as the existing two homes, but much, much larger, correct?
Yes, it would be. And you could fit significantly, they could possibly put 10 bedrooms in that home.
They could possibly put three bedrooms in that home.
They could.
I mean, this is supposition, is what could they put there and what would rationally go there, so.
Well, I think it's important to note that the two smaller homes are a better alternative to the neighborhood than one very large home, which would be just as high, would have a greater, a much greater mass, and would have probably as big, if not a bigger, impact on the surrounding neighbors than the two homes that are proposed. Everybody always says, "Well, we're going to cut this in half. We're going to have traffic problems. We're going to have drainage problems. Too many cars, too many bedrooms." That's going to occur regardless of what's built there. One very large house is going to create the scene.
So, there would be, you're expecting a 10-bedroom house to be built there instead of this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I agree. It's likely not going to be a 10-bedroom house, but.
Right, but you're asking is what's the maximum that could possibly go there, and that's really not what we would expect to go there, so.
It's not, but it could be. And that's, I think that the.
You can continue, that's.
No, your point's well taken, that, of course, you're not going to build a 10,000-square-foot, 10-bedroom house. But a much larger house than is proposed is going to be built. So, when you look at the better planning alternative, is it one very big house or two more modest homes? That's obviously in your discretion, but those two modest homes don't require variances. They fit into the zone plan along this block, as Mr. Chu testified. Neighbors always say, "Well, I don't want this built next to me because it's going to cause a drainage problem." Obviously, your code requires all water to be maintained and taken care of on-site. People say, "I don't want this built next to me, you're going to bother my trees." Well, the trees are going to get replanted and there's going to be an appropriate amount of shrubs. Everything's being done per the code. But that's not what the neighbors want to hear. They want to hear, "Nothing's going to change. We're going to keep these little salt boxes, everything's going to remain like it was." That's just not the case anywhere in town, or anywhere in any town in 2019. The new construction on an existing lot is going to be one big house or two small houses. Trying to stop this by saying, "Well, it's going to create a traffic problem." We think it actually solves a traffic problem because you have more off-street parking. You are getting rid of a couple curb parking areas, but what you're getting off the street is going to be much greater and it'll be much easier for people to go up and down the block. You're probably going to hear testimony that, "I don't like this. It's not what I want next to my house." It's not really a legitimate argument. A legitimate argument is, "I don't like this because this is going to be a problem and here is why." Nobody wants to see a new, bigger house built next to theirs. The neighbor who's probably going to object is on the exact same size lot. Same-sized property, no off-street parking spaces, yet they don't want this to be done.
70 feet or 35 feet?
35 feet. So, when we talk about a reasonable expectation of what will be built in and around this neighborhood, we think that the applicant put together a very reasonable plan. The applicant's willing to deed restrict, so in the future, there's never going to be a variance application before this board where they say, "We want an additional bedroom. We want something else here or there." The applicant has even gone so far as to offer the neighbors a slightly lower house and maybe put the garage as a detached garage and not directly underneath. I don't think anything would satisfy any neighbor, as we see all the time in town. If something's being built in and around their property that's new, they don't want it. It's the typical NIMBY principle, "Not in my backyard. I like new construction, but I like it down the street. I like a third-floor house, but not behind mine." They're going to remove a tree, they're going to have a pool. The pool's going to cause the neighbors to have parties. Parties are going to cause trash. None of these arguments are really legitimate arguments. It's just something people say.
Well, how about the argument, "I'd rather have one house there instead of two houses there?"
Based on what?
Based on what, that the lot's too small for two houses?
But every other lot along the street has one house.
And they're all too small.
And it's 35-foot wide?
Right, and we wouldn't, I'm just saying, that's a legitimate argument.
I understand that, but if someone's.
Right.
If my client purchased, for example, the lot next door, right here, Lot 45, they come in for a building permit, they're getting a permit to build exactly what we proposed. No variances, no questions asked. So, what we're saying is, why can't we constitutionally have what Lot 45 has, what Lot 42 has? It's exactly the same-sized lot. It's a flood-compliant house. It's a better design than what's there now. So, had PMG purchased any of these other lots, we're not here before the board. They're going in to see Mr. Gallantino and they're getting a building permit if the property doesn't require variances. So, how does that differ because this lot just happens to be wider?
Just a quick question, I think it's going to be to your professional, but just to play off of what you said, why don't you have the right to build the same house on a 35-foot lot? You do, and you could have your client purchase a 35-foot lot and do that, but you're asking to do that on a 70-foot lot. And you're not, when you were speaking, I think this is going to go to Mr. Chu, you said that you believe that the two homes versus the one home fits more with the zone plan, and I'm just curious, what aspect of the zone plan, in your opinion, professional opinion, encourages undersized lots? And specifically, in a scenario where, if you're saying there are, to be generous to you, 11, I believe it was, 35-foot frontages on Gladstone? Is that what we said?
There's a total of 11 that are under, that are 35 or less.
Okay, so I want to use the most generous number, say 11, and then those that are 40, I guess, are over, we said 9? Or was it less than that or more than that?
There's a total of 22, so there's 11 and 11.
Okay, so, why do you believe, in your professional opinion, the zone plan encourages undersized lots versus more appropriate, larger lots? And can you address the fact that not only you're creating two more undersized lots, they're going to be side by side, so we're going to have a 10-foot shortage directly next to each other?
The block here is a deeper block, so it allows for larger lot areas, so we're complying with lot areas, and thus, it's the appropriate population density that complies with the zone plan? If that answers your question.
So, Ms. Hess, what we're really saying is, we're going to continue to do exactly what's been done historically along this street. Historically, 35-foot wide, 35-foot wide lots have been developed, and not developed well, by the way. The homes that are on those properties are not flood-compliant. Some of them have one-foot setbacks to the property line. The house at 115, the Kane property, looks like it's about a one-foot setback, literally, to the property line. The two new homes that are built will increase light air and open space, because the one that's there now has an incredible amount of impervious coverage. We're going to be under on impervious coverage. The houses, depending on if we redesigned with the detached garage, will be either at or under Margate's co requirement for height. And we're basically continuing from Lot 47 all the way down to Lot 37, new homes built, hopefully in the future, on the others as well, on 30-foot wide lots. At some point in the future, all of these 30-foot wide, 35-foot wide lots are going to have new homes exactly as Ms. Cummings designed.
But to fit in a neighborhood, does that require to have identical lots with identical homes? Or do you think the zone plan intended to have balancing properties and balancing homes to complement the neighborhood? Because the way I see it, there's 50 small lots, 50% small lots, 50% appropriate-sized lots, and that complements the neighborhood. If each lot was identically small and identically overbuilt, would that create a different neighborhood? Does it have to be the same to be fit in the neighborhood? That's what my issue is.
I'm going to respectfully disagree. I don't know how the city planners at some point set this up, but it's too all over the place to be a plan. I mean, you've got a 35 and a 20, you've got a 70 with 50s behind it, a 48 and a 47, which doesn't have a real great plan feel to it. If you look at what the neighborhood pattern has been along this block, and as Mr. Chu pointed out, Mr. McLaren, continuing further down, at some point, 30-foot, 35-foot wide lots were the prevalent size. I mean, that's pretty much what, what had occurred there, and maybe this was a product of a couple of lot consolidations over time, and this one and this one would have been 30s, but 35s, and somehow became 70s. We don't know how it happened, but we just want to go back to the way it should look. And again, if any of these homes are demolished from Lot 47 to 45, and 42 to 40, they're going to be here with the exact same product that you have in front of you, and you're not going to have any say to tell them no.
Mr. Goldstein, this has come up in, in a lot of cases, and it goes back to in 1914 when the maps were drawn, and we're just not, it, they were small lots then, they And we're just not, it, they were small lots then. They were smaller bungalows, I'm sure, than what shows up there if it wasn't just marshland, but it doesn't fit in with what we have today. And I think what Ms. Hess was saying was, you have half-large, half-small. We could err on the size of larger rather than smaller, or on the side of smaller instead of larger. It's, I don't see the predominance of small lots. I see half-small lots and half-oversized lots.
Well, that may be true in Block 308, but in 302...
When you live on a street, that's your block, both sides of the street, neighborhood-wise, I'm speaking, not numbers. Neighborhood, both sides of that street is the block, not tax-mac block.
When you walk, when you drive up Gladstone...
I live on Gladstone.
More than fifty percent of those properties are thirty-five-foot lots. So that's sort of the feel for that when you go up that street. While there are bungalows on that street right now, at some point, they'll all be, they will be built into, comply with the zone.
Right, and half of them will be on thirty-five-foot lots, and half of them will be on big lots.
Well, it's more, when you look at the whole, the street, when you go up, the whole street as a whole, there's, it's more than fifty percent. And on this one side of the street, it's seventy percent on the right side, and you're forty percent on the other side.
Okay.
So that's, you know, like half on one side, and the other one is mostly. The, on the right-hand side of the plan, that block is deeper. So that allows for these narrower lots that meet and comply with the lot area. So you have the appropriate density for, that meets the zone plan and is appropriate for the town. It's just they're little narrower lots by five feet. You can also see, it looks like, at some point, I believe that Lot 43 was a consolidation because Lot 44 is missing when you go through the lot numbers. And if you go down other, you look at the other seventy-foot lot, it's 37, 39. Where'd Lot 38 go? Because it probably went, they were all thirty-fives at one point, and some reason, they, someone bought those two lots, consolidated them, and built one house on them.
Wouldn't we be able to know that, though?
Title search, that would be the only way to find out.
I think the bigger problem here is the height. I think the bigger problem is the height. You know, these lots were designed for little ranchers and, you know, when you drove a Model T, you only needed a, you know, a six-foot garage door. This is not 1932 when they did this, when they subdivided everything. When they subdivided, they thought they were gonna be sure cottages. They didn't think they were gonna be thirty-nine feet high. This is a four-story house. You can call it a three-story all day long. It's a four-story house. You've got nine feet under the bottom. That's a story. So you're really sticking up on top of the rest of those little homes. All right, you've got a couple, but why do we just keep increasing that?
Yeah, it'll look exactly like the home.
You can't tell me that Aaron Light won't be affected by this.
Well, if everyone built according to the plan, meaning the ordinance rules...
Right.
Then this is a better environment than a seventy-foot...
Mr. Cristaldi...
I'm having a hard time.
In a very admirable way, the applicant had indicated that he would be willing to do a two-story house, not a two-and-a-half, and perhaps even do a two-story house with a detached garage, which would lower the height significantly. If height is the issue, and it sounds like some of the neighbors believe height is the issue...
I think so.
Height can be accommodated. The important aspect of this is to make the property as, by right as possible. That's why the plans done by Ms. Cummings are completely by right based on a thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot-wide lot. What the applicant had indicated just now, after your comment, was, to the extent this would be approved, one of the conditions would be, the house on each lot would be two stories with a detached garage, which would lower the house considerably. Well, that becomes a coverage issue, but I think we can fit it in because the detached garage doesn't count towards coverage.
Roger, can I get a clarification on this? I'm looking at five feet and eight feet, so now we would kick in other variances if they put a driveway and a detached garage, right?
No.
Five feet and eight feet, you have to have eight and...
They would have to shrink down the side yard setback to get a ten-foot driveway in.
Yeah, it's gonna...
No, they'd have to maintain the five-foot minimum setback.
They gotta make a smaller house. They gotta make a narrower house.
They'll make it more narrow, but it'd be longer.
Right, I think that's what Tom was saying. The house would have to be smaller.
Collins is correct.
And you're gonna have a long driveway that won't be used.
And right now, the house is only twenty-two feet wide. How much smaller can you make a house?
It would be a little narrower, but as Mr...
Everything needs to be on the record. That wasn't you, Eric. The plans show four, but they gave testimony for five. Ten bedrooms, Climb.
It would be four bedrooms based on the proposed potential new design. What? Two-story.
He's asking.
Well, we would deed restrict it and put a condition on it.
On the record, please.
The height complies with the zone.
Eric, I think some of the board's considering what you're saying, but I just wanna clarify what actually it is you're modifying because it's still gonna technically be three stories, though, isn't it?
It's two and a half.
Two and a half plus a detached garage. Is that what you're proposing, or what are you proposing?
Well, it would be crawl space, first floor, second floor. The garage would be detached at that point, so it would be much lower.
From grade, how high is to the first floor?
What's the base floor?
Base floor is eight.
So four foot?
Bottom of the floor has to be eleven. Six-point-six feet is the average grade.
It's not a practical difference, really. That's what I'm saying. You don't even have to calculate it. If you can get an estimate for actual height that would be minimized, regardless of how you're gonna set it up, what is the actual difference from the height if you modified it? And you don't have to change it, but if you did, what would it actually be?
One moment, please.
That's better. Jimmy said three feet higher with the garage, so it would be three feet lower without the garage.
That's why we went to the garage.
And then you also have more coverage on the little lots with the garage.
Yeah, but that doesn't count.
I'm gonna call a break here. Go up, turn that off, break, because everybody's talking, and it should be on the record. So you guys can keep talking, and I just don't want all this talking going on up here, and we're not on the record. All right, we're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has consulted with his planner, and having considered the board's comments, what he would be willing to do as an accommodation would be to lower the overall height by four feet, keep the same design he has now. Instead of five bedrooms, it would be four bedrooms, but the parking would still be underneath. Obviously, it's a by-right property. There's no other setback variances that are required. Deed restrict the property, so no further variances would be obtainable in the future as a condition of a proposed subdivision, two lots, thirty-five feet wide each.
That third-floor deck will be removed from this plan.
That's correct. So basically, he'd be cutting out the top portion where the, we'll call it the third floor, the two-and-a-half stories, it would be the half-story would be removed in its entirety. The house would be two stories over the existing parking and four bedrooms only. No, it would be attic only. Correct.
It will.
I need to hear that. Could you turn your microphone on?
What pitch would the roof be at that point?
Um, when he gets sworn in, he might as well. You're here. Mr. Manos? The applicant would probably testify, so I just want it to be sworn in.
Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
Philip Guinto, PMG Construction, it's 117 North Gladstone Avenue.
Can you spell your last name?
G-U-I-N-T-O.
And you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks. Thank you.
So, Phil, you've been here, obviously, you've heard everything. You're aware of this design. We've been working on this.
What we would take away would be the third story, so it would take away the third-story little balcony. It would take away our dormers. When it, you're talking about pitch, the pitch now is...
Nine on twelve.
You have a nine-twelve nail.
I mean, the, you know, curb appeal aesthetics have to come into play at some point, so Terry has to kind of do what she has to do. But if anything, if you were to say, "Hey, I'm gonna put you at the old height where, you know, I know it just went up, and that's why we have this design," but I'm sure that Terry can work with a height that is reasonable.
My reasoning for that is, if you still go with a nine-pitch roof on there, it can be a finished attic.
This will not, yeah, so we will...
If we cut that down and we gotta go by code, they really can't finish it.
Yeah, I mean, my idea that, you know, I...
I'm saying, go with design. I agree with that.
Yes.
But I wanna make it that you can't finish it.
Finish, yeah.
Right, because I get calls every week, "Can you finish this off?"
Like by a future owner or something like that. Yeah, I mean, we'll make it to where it's, you know, just a pop-up attic space for storage, no steps. I don't know if that'll help. You could put some kind of thing in there where it's, you know, you can't put steps in. Yeah, no staircase. I think if anything, that'll help because maybe we could do a pull-down, so it's an actual usable attic space. You know, I heard everybody's argument in shrinking this and making it skinnier. Because you're gonna be honest, somebody said, like, "Oh, if you do a driveway in the back or a garage in the back," that was, like, it's just, it's too thin. It'll look funny at that point, you know, what are we building? Why am I building? Why am I in this industry? You know, if I don't believe in these designs, if I don't believe in what I'm doing, I'd rather just not do it. So the only thing in my head that makes sense is, give up the attic space. Obviously, our price points will come down. Or do one very big house on a seventy-foot-wide lot, which I just don't think will fit the neighborhood. It's not that we can't do that because we have a seventy-foot lot. We can do that, and we can go up very high, and it could be an eyesore, but I like these designs.
So your idea, Phil, would be to drop the height four feet, change the pitch of the roof, and then as a condition of approval, the attic wouldn't be finished for livable space. You can make it a nice attic for storage, but it could only be storage?
Only be storage, no staircases up.
Pull-down stairs, obviously.
The dormers would go. Again, I just, you know, cutting off, I would just have to talk to Terry. It would just have to be, it would have to look, you know, presentable, that's all. I don't wanna do a flat roof.
Dormers are aesthetic. I mean, if you have, if there's not room enough there to finish it off, and you have dormers, no big deal, it looks better.
Yeah, I agree.
And it gives you more storage up there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little worried on shrinking that, but, you know, again, just for aesthetics. It's not even the usable space that worries me. It's just making the house look good for the neighborhood. You know, if there's any other things we can put in to where, you know, the height's not that much of an issue just so we can have aesthetics, we would obviously put them in where that would be unusable space. If that's, the worry here is the extra bedroom and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, just a point for the record. I can tell you right now, I do not feel comfortable voting on a plan, on a proposal, that's gonna be different than what we're looking at. And if you're gonna come and do this, and why don't we postpone this till next month, come in with the finished building that we're gonna vote on and let the neighbors and us look at it. By changing it verbally tonight...
So if you said a...
That doesn't mean anything. I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying, I don't feel comfortable without seeing a physical plan of what's actually gonna be there. You can't tell me, "Oh, I'll change this and it won't be..." I don't know that. I wanna see, and I wanna see exactly what it is. And I don't see how we can all vote on this if we don't, what are we voting on? We don't know. We're voting on...
We're voting on this house that's four feet shorter and without an attic.
It would be the same design.
Right.
The only thing I think about that is that we voted on other subdivisions, and there was no design of the house. You know, we made those votes before. There was no design. We just voted on the subdivision.
But we didn't subdivide lots that were causing small, they weren't over thirty-five-foot lots. You might have had it. So it's different. This is, this is a big difference.
If it's by right versus one that requires a lot width variance, there is a difference. I don't know what's past.
Well, you know, when we did, when we did the one across where the synagogue was, was there any design of houses there? Was that...
Yes.
There was?
Yes.
No, there wasn't.
They showed the three houses, and we made a move.
No, it was just...
They were just outlined.
But they didn't require, that was an oversize. There was no, this is, they didn't require a lot width or a lot...
Oh, no, 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 they did. They did. They did.
Yeah.
It was zoned the same as the parkway. They insisted it wasn't a parkway. Now they call it parkway north.
Either way, we're still, you're still asking us to vote on something that we're just pie in the sky picturing. I just don't see...
Okay, go ahead.
In your, you know, in your, in my defense, I guess, the design would be the exact same thing. All we're doing is shrinking this down a little bit and taking that, basically what he said was moving the pitch down. So as long as we can keep some dormers to make it aesthetically look good, again, I would just rather, you know, you give me a number. You say, "Don't go above this height. Don't give me steps to the attic."
And you're subtracting one bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, subtract that. So don't go above a certain amount of bedrooms, something like this. But as far as the design that you're seeing, I mean, we want these houses to look nice. We want them to look kinda different. We feel like we have a very good design by Terry. Again, I, you know, I don't wanna be pushed into a spot where I'm, again, building something that I don't believe in. So I don't know if that kinda answers your question. You know, we can come back here all day with different plans and smaller houses, but at the end of the day, if I go back to the drawing board and we start, you know, if I let her... I would just rather you tell me what you would accept.
Well, he can't do that. Mr. Collins does make a legal point. He has to be comfortable with his vote as to what this would look like. It sounds like what you're saying, Phil, is that you would take this exact design, remove a bedroom, drop it down four feet, change the roof pitch, and restrict the attic. So we have to make sure the board members are comfortable with what they're voting for, and he may or may not be comfortable based upon that statement. But it sounds to me like this design becomes a smaller house in height, smaller house by bedroom, and a condition of approval is that the attic could not be a finished attic where, as Mr. Cristaldi pointed out, additional space could be somehow squeezed in there. You're okay with those conditions, correct?
Yes.
We believe, Mr. Chairman, that based upon the application in its entirety, the professional planning testimony, the designs of the homes as an entire project with these two lots and these two homes being built on the lot, that we meet the requirements of the municipal land use law for a C2 variance, seventy-foot wide into two thirty-fives with the design as presented as modified by the applicant. With that, we would be comfortable resting unless the board has any further questions.
Anything else from the board?
What would the deed restriction exactly say?
So the deed restriction would be that a house which needed variances for bulk setbacks, coverage, et cetera, couldn't be built on the property ever. Okay, that's the first one. There would be a condition of the approval, I believe, Mr. Manos, that the design as submitted would be four feet less in height with one less bedroom and a change in the roof pitch and whatever condition has to be put on so the attic couldn't be finished for habitable space.
Would you let me do my job? If there's nothing else on the board, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Do you have anything else, Eric, or can I open it up, or?
Uh, we don't, but just, Mr. Chairman, we just reserve the right to respond to whatever.
Absolutely.
So, no, with that, we're okay to conference a little bit and let the public speak their mind.
All right, so if someone from the public wants to speak, oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna have the attorney first. And after him, he's gonna come up and, I understand, but he's already been sworn in, or he doesn't need to be sworn in. When you come up, state your name, address, and then you'll be sworn in, and then you can say what you have to say.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Ficetti from the law firm Montgomery McCracken-Walker and Rhodes on behalf of Marty and Lauren Kane. Mr. and Mrs. Kane are residents and owners of the property located at... I apologize. One fifteen, yes, one fifteen.
Could you show us on the map where they live? Thank you.
Of course, I have it. They are on the B side.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as the application has currently been submitted, and I understand that Mr. Goldstein has made certain changes, but, and I just wanna make sure, but as, as it was submitted, I believe it was as Mr. Collins had indicated, obviously, I have some concerns about how that has been crystallized. But one of the major concerns that we have is, that my clients have, excuse me, is that what the New Jersey, what the New Jersey courts have said is that no C-two variance should be granted when merely the purposes of the owner will be advanced. The grant of the approval must actually benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. The focus of a C-two case, then, will not be on the characteristics of the land that, in light of the current zoning requirements, creates a hardship on the owner, warranting a relaxation of the standards, but on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. I think as Ms. Hess indicated, I believe also, I believe as Mr. Cristaldi indicated, and as the, as Mr. Patterson, as Chairman Patterson has indicated, that you can't simply look at this piecemeal and say, well, you know, the character of the neighborhood is on one side of the street. That, that's simply not the case. You have to look at this and say, what do we have here in terms of the neighborhood? Well, the neighborhood is both sides.
There's a microphone you can take with you.
I apologize, this is force of habit again.
No, there's a microphone right there.
That's right, I'll, I'll, I'll stay here. Let me keep my thoughts. So, I think what you have to do is, I think you have to look at both sides of the street. I think you have to look at the surrounding area to say, what is the, the characteristics of the neighborhood? You know, what do we have here? Yes, we have lots that are less than the requirements of the Schedule B1. However, I think it's important to note that that ordinance has been amended repeatedly. It's been amended nine twenty-four oh six, it's been, and, you know, as recently, I believe, in October of two thousand eighteen. If the board, in its infinite wisdom, believed that the lots should be less than forty feet, because the changing nature, as the applicant has kind of, as the, excuse me, the applicant's expert has kind of indicated, then I think the, I, I think you would see that reflected in the ordinance. That has not happened. The ordinance has stayed consistent that in S-twenty-five lots, where this, which this property is located, that you need forty-foot minimum width. I think it's also been acknowledged that here, you have the ability by the applicant to build a property on, a single house on that property, which is a seventy-foot lot. So, with that said, we really don't believe that the applicant has met its burden to say that, that, you know, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. We also believe that, you know, allowing these two units on lots that are, that are undersized and are not, are, do not comply with the ordinance would impair the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and the, and the zoning ordinance. We're also, we, we, we do not believe that the purposes of the MLUL can be advanced as a result of this deviation, or this requested deviation. Again, we believe that the effect and the, and the character of the neighborhood on these houses, as the board has correctly pointed out, these are, you know, smaller bungalows that, at the time that they were developed, yes, this was, this potentially was a, a, a different, had a different character, it was a different time. However, it hasn't changed such that, as, as you see in other shore towns where you have, on, at every turn, you know, four and five-story monstrosities going out, blocking out airlight and access to open space, excuse me, for existing property owners. Yes, we understand that this, that this lot is differently configured than the other lots. However, that's how the property is, and we believe that, at this point, we do not believe that sufficient proof has been established in order to warrant the granting of a variance as it was initially submitted to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please come forward, state your name, it'd be sworn in, name, address, it'd be sworn in. You'll have to, since she came up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. State your name and address, please.
Susan Steinberg, one thirteen North Frontenac Avenue. With all due respect...
I just have to swear again. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give me, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
There, go ahead.
With all due respect to the builder and his representative, I really feel, as one who lives in the neighborhood and walks the block regularly with my dog, putting two structures that are this size on that lot will substantially change the quality of the neighborhood. Right now, as everyone has expressed, it was mostly little bungalows that were built. I'm curious to know what the price point is on these two homes, since he alluded to the fact that it would be more affordable for people to move in. So far, what I've seen is, things are going higher, you're putting five bedrooms in, most of the homes are not under seven hundred thousand dollars. Young families are not going to be able to afford that, so it's really not going to improve the quality of Margate, in my opinion. I also am concerned that if we zone every thirty-five-foot lot, or we make the whole block thirty-five feet, you're going to be ticky-tacky and looking like row houses in northeast Philadelphia. So, whether you call it a townhouse or a row house, it's the same thing. I also am concerned that, I read the, the zoning re, re, reorganization, I guess, for want of a better word, the Margate Plan that was put into effect in two thousand seventeen. I recognize the fact that this is an aging community, but I think that more needs to be done to find out or figure out a way to develop this community again, to be more affordable to young families with children, so that Margate can continue to thrive. So, again, those are my opinions and my feelings, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that respectfully?
Sure.
Again, with all due respect, two smaller homes will be more affordable than one very, very large home. Your argument that this changes the character is in no way applicable to what will get built there in the future, which is bigger, more expensive, and certainly not gonna be affordable for a young family. Appreciate your point, but I think you're just trying to stop this, putting any argument before the board that doesn't really have merit. So, again, respectfully, I think that one very large house will be more expensive than two slightly smaller.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Please come forward, state your name.
Steve Zarrett.
Address?
One sixteen North Gladstone.
How do you spell your last name?
Z A R E T T.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give me, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Proceed.
I've been coming to Margate for a long time, thirty-five, forty years, and my wife and I found Gladstone and loved the street, because it was all quaint, smaller houses. None of the houses have parking underneath. It's not like CI where all the houses are on pila, pylons and, you know, parking underneath. It's a lot different. So, when I heard about this from one of my neighbors that came down and said, you know, I'm out of town, I'm out of the country, the other neighbor's out of country, can you come down and talk? And I said, well, if I can go to Robertson and drink on you, then yes, I'll come down. So, what I'm saying is, the neighborhood's the neighborhood, and by putting two houses on this lot and subdividing it, it won't look right, especially if there's garages underneath and driving underneath. My neighbor built, or redid his house, and it's, it's one of the bigger houses on the street, but he doesn't have parking underneath, it's thinner. It works for the neighborhood. I just don't think two houses on that size lot would work for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
May I respond again, Mr. Chairman, respectfully?
If you're more respectful this time.
Thank you. This argument, again, that it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood to put two houses there, putting two smaller houses would be a better alternative than one very large house, where parking will be underneath, where the height will be the nine feet of the garage plus thirty feet on top. What the applicant has done is make a concession to try to make it less of a massive development. But the neighbors who are objecting are objecting to two smaller homes. What they're going to get is one bigger home at the full height that the board has absolutely no jurisdiction over. Hopefully, everybody understands.
Anyone else in the public? Please come forward and be sworn in.
I don't know if I have a precedent, but I do rent one from one nineteen.
Just state your name and address first.
Carlane, one nineteen North Gladstone.
How, how do you spell your last name?
L A N E with a K.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give me, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And you're a tenant at that address?
Correct.
You can speak, please, you're welcome.
So, I look at, first of all, first, I believe in trust to verify, and when you, when you submit plans and you have all these, I don't know if that's precedence here or, or at all, but when you submit plans, you stand by your plan. If the plan is highly variant in the way they're proposing, I'd rather see the plan. And then, and then on top of that, the, the fact that you raise a house and put three car parking underneath it, two, two in a row, that's six total, possibly even eight, depending on the size of the house, now you're talking about coming out of a parking lot with very, very limited turn radius to the right and left. Right? And, and that, and now, but, but those houses don't exist in Margate. I don't see them at all. If they do, I, 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 you know, I walk around the neighborhood all the time. I don't see that type of house.
But houses with driveways, everybody has to back out onto the streets, so...
Well, I understand, but, but now we're talking about three cars in, this one wants to move, two of them have to back out.
Right.
It becomes like more of a, a logistics ma, a nightmare.
With a driveway.
I just feel that that's just, that's such a precedent that it doesn't exist at the moment, and we're now totally deviating from that concept. And that's just a, that's just an, that, so, we have now six cars instead of, and number one, they don't even have a, they don't have the, the curb. For the, the current driveway is elevated, it's not recessed, so that, so that...
There is no current driveway. Is there?
That's correct. There's no...
There's no current driveway, there's no curb cuts, right?
Right. So, they'd have to cut the curbs and then all that, and two curbs, so they're gonna eliminate up to probably two to three parallel parking opportunities.
Right, but those people could park in the driveway, it would be the homeowner's parking.
I know.
I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree. I just put that, the precedent around, and then, you know,
Right.
if you set a new precedent, that's, that's gonna be the precedent for everything, and that would totally change the neighborhood. And then now, the next thirty-five-foot lot down on the side, if they build, they're gonna put a carport underneath it.
Well, yeah, I, I, just to let you know, though, that you have to have a driveway for anything new in town, so it's not really a precedent. If a new house goes up, you can't have no curb cuts, you have to put a driveway in, so...
Correct. So, then, whatever...
It's gonna happen. Anything that new is gonna have a driveway.
Okay.
So, okay, just for your information.
Okay. All right, I'd be on it, I don't know anything else.
Thank you.
And I have a request also from the neighbors from all over to come down, because they're either abroad and...
Right.
and it's the middle of the winter, and people are up in upstate New York, and, you know, try to come down here. So...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I just have one question, to be totally clear.
Put, talk into the mic, please.
If, the other eleven lots of the thirty-five feet, if they brought this house plan in, there would, there would be no variance.
No variance.
No variance. They could build it by right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not a factor.
Well, but they can.
No, it's not. They can.
They can.
Anyone else from the public? Public portion's closed. I'm, I'm sorry.
Is there a price point for these houses?
Well, and certainly the builder can discuss, the price point for the singles are gonna be greatly less than if they built one big one, but, yeah, come on.
So, if we did the two houses, if we take away the third story, these houses are selling in the eight hundreds. So, that's our price point. If we kept the third story, nine, nine fifty. If we build one massive home, one point three, one point four. So, there's our, you know, there's our outs. That's why if we keep things under a million dollars, you know, everybody says these bungalows and things that are being built, you know, I think building something for under a million, selling it for under a million is definitely beneficial than going over that price point, because at that point, you're getting either multifamilies or three-month, you know, people are coming three months, or people are gonna run it down, so...
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Economically, if you were to take one of those other thirty-five-foot lots,
Yes.
would you buy that lot, build a single on there of this magnitude?
Yes, without a doubt. I mean, that's, on the, on the, on the same street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What you're paying for that lot?
We didn't, we didn't buy this lot, that we have, again, we can still build one home on this.
I, I understand that you can build the one home on the same economically.
Economically, we've planned both ways. So, we didn't plan this to buy this lot and come in here and to get all yeses. We always, in building, you always kinda go what-ifs.
I'm in the building business, so I do understand that, but I'm saying, if I buy one of them lots and it's gonna cost me close to three fifty to four to buy that lot?
Well, I wouldn't pay three fifty.
Economics has nothing to do with what the board discusses, so I'd like to cut this conversation right now.
I agree.
Mike had asked a question, Richmond, you know, if someone came in from a thirty-five-foot lot and wanted to build this house, could they build it short? But I don't think that's the proper analogy. Say somebody came in with two side-by-side lots, any number you want, and they would be a ten-foot shortage. That would be a comparison. Someone that would be asking for the same thing, whether it's the same house. Sure, you can say, yeah, if someone came in and they had by right, yeah, they could do it. That's not the question here. This is one lot that's going to be five-foot shortage, two side-by-side, and while the lot area is satisfied, the problem is, sure, we have a deep lot, but you're gonna feel that shortage when you're driving down the street, when you're walking down the street. There's no way, they're not gonna feel the shortage. And that's a busy, heavily trafficked street, because everyone that leaves Castles, everyone that leaves Starbucks, if they park there, they're funneled right down there. So, it's gonna be noticed not by the forty people on the lot, or on the street, or whatever you, or, excuse me, the twenty people. It's gonna be felt by a lot of the community. And it's not just a mere by-right house. You're, I think, minimizing the effect that it's gonna have, not just on the immediate neighbors, but on a larger number of the community.
I'm, again, gonna just respectfully disagree with Hess, I'll tell you why. Because if those homes are built, you're gonna have six off-street spots where now, remember, none exist. There's no off-street parking there. So, you're gonna have cars off of the street.
Potentially, if they use it.
Well, the neighbors are...
You can't guarantee they'll use it, and we can't guarantee, if they use it, respectfully.
The homeowners are probably gonna use their spots, not park in the street, because why would they park in the street if they have three...
To save it for their guests.
Well, that could happen.
Respectfully.
But they're going to absolutely have three spots per house.
Right.
Now, as you're driving down any street in town, it's busy. I mean, we, we can't...
Right, some are busier than others.
We can't discuss enough that parking is always a problem, and traffic is always a problem, especially in the summer. There's construction in and around that area, people put dumpsters on the street, that's just a fact of life that we live with. Ma'am, would you please let me speak and stop interrupting me? It's very rude. What we're trying to do is come up with the best possible planning alternative. One big house probably creates more of a headache, because you're gonna have more people coming to visit, it's gonna be a bigger pool, it's gonna be a much larger massive structure. The two smaller, really quaint-designed homes fit in better in this development area, because that's, along that side of the street, how all of the other lots are set up. So, I get your argument, but I think if you put one big house there, it's going to attract more people than two much more modest homes.
Right. And I heard you, as you responded, which you certainly should respond to anyone, you know, from the public, as they said that their concern was, two houses won't look as good as one house, and you said, that's not a valid argument. Well, then, equally so then. Well, then, equally so then, you can't then go and say that two would look better than one. They're saying one would look better than two, and you're saying two would look better, it's the same thing.
Okay, could we, let's, I got it, Desmond, I got it.
Okay.
Anything else from the Board? Go ahead, wait, wait one second.
Mike and I both feel that if there-
We can't take testimony from Mike from you, go ahead, you speak. How do you feel?
I agree.
Mike will speak after me. They said they'd consider removing the upper four, bring it down four feet. We don't think four feet is enough, we think five would be the minimum, and six-
Well, they've already made their offer, and now we're discussing. They've made their offer.
I'm giving them the opportunity to-
Don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would it be possible-
I feel we're getting carried away here, so if-
Would it be possible to just discuss with the applicant a couple of minor items, two or three minutes before we come back and finalize this application?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Off the mic, please.
Mr. Chair, oh, we back on?
We're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, having considered Mr. Collins' comments, Mr. Cristaldi and Wazleski's comments, the developer has changed its proposal to lower the overall height five feet, changing the roof pitch, and four bedrooms, not five, and the other conditions that we had proposed before.
Should I open up the public again with any changes, or does that not make any difference?
No, you're already closed.
Well, they changed it, so do I have to open it up again?
If anyone has any further comment, it's not repetitive, you can come up briefly.
Anyone else have anything to say? That's not repetitive?
Name and address, please.
Eve Bourjoly, 112 North Frontenac Avenue.
Can you spell your, your last name, please?
B-O-U-R-J-O-L-L-Y. I love-
And you swear in front of the testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I moved to Margate from Philadelphia. I don't consider myself all year round, but I'm here every week, all right? I would much rather see one houses, one house, than two. What he's proposing is moving the house further towards my house, now I have two houses blocking my view, plus a pool, okay? So, for us parking, everybody, we have the center there, whenever there is a problem, people park all over the place, on both streets, Gladstone or Frontenac or Winchester or Mammoth. By him putting two houses there, at least three or four parking space will be eliminated from the block. He may not agree with what I'm saying. If it was me on this Board, I would not have approved of anything unless I see the exact plan that he's showing, he's proposing. Because he can say something now, and later on, he come back and say something else. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
This is a great neighborhood, I love the houses on Gladstone, they're not super big, they're perfect, and for him to propose what he's doing is going to change the neighborhood. And the next house could be much bigger than what he's saying, I'd rather have one house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In response, Mr. Chairman, the applicant has agreed to come back with a revised plan so that the Board and members of the public can see exactly what this house would look like, instead of see it as a theoretical with the height being lower.
So, you want to put this off?
I would request an adjournment pending the submission of revised plans, as suggested by the Board, we think it's a good idea, so that there's no question as to what these homes will look like.
Okay.
We would ask that we not have to renotice and readvertise, but we'll submit new plans per the MLUL 10 days prior to the next meeting for anyone to take a look at.
Can we get them on the next meeting? I don't know what the schedule is. Sure. We'll start at four.
I think it's seven.
Nah, I, I don't see why we couldn't make this work. Okay.
It's a continuation, so it's not, it wouldn't be a new hearing, it's a continuation, we're not going to do a redo, so it would be a continuation of tonight's hearing, so hopefully it would move quicker.
What we'd really like to do is to have the plans, and I think it's fair to the Board to give them something they can vote on. I think Mr. Collins pointed out correctly, we're not talking about theoreticals here, and it's not the type of case where we've got a lot of buy-in from the neighborhood. I think when we come back, all the people who are against are going to be very much in favor of it, because they're going to see a property that shows exactly what they want, which is less height. So, in that regard, we're also going to bring back what could be built by right, and I think if you were to compare, sir, you had a great idea, to actually see everything, if you see what we're going to potentially build versus what could be built, I think we're going to win you over, and I think we're going to see you next month as a yes, so thank you. So, with that, we would ask to have this continued.
So allowed.
Great.
All right, so just-
Ladies and gentlemen, sorry for taking up so much time, but, really-
Saves us time next time.
In a very Solomon-esque way, you've given us some great guidance.
This will be carried, February 28th, the applicant won't be required to republish or renotice, and all plans will be on file 10 days in advance.
Great.
Say thank you and sorry for taking up so much of your time.
What, on, just on the beach block? Water, beach, water front.
I would keep them all because you have the surveys and the applications.
You're taking it off. You want me to clean the room? Clear the room?
Okay.
Yeah, because I talked to them, it's supposed to be an entry house, that third foot deck would have been an eye.
I, I am requesting that everyone keep-
Thanks a lot.
All the plans that were not heard tonight for the next meeting, because it, that you hold them, because it has your surveys, the applications.
There's two.
Yes, so please save all three sets of plans.
This one plus the-
West Drive, Bendome Avenue, and this one Gladstone.
We need to talk, that's never, that's never a good thing to say.
Ask government to leave that we would be entering.
Yes. Chairman, chairman. We start talking about, we are not talking about. Was I miserable in me?
All right, we're now going to enter in a closed session to discuss-
Anyone else to leave, please?
You have to leave. Good night. Good night. Good night.
Good night.
Take a seat. Everybody take a seat.
Is everybody out?
All right, we're in-
Ma'am, would you leave, please?
Just need a motion to enter into-
Let me turn this on, please.
Somebody make a motion to reconvene?
I'll make a motion, we reconvene.
I'll second.
We're reconvene, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I think I just have to-
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In closed session.
All in favor of reconvening?
Aye.
And in closed session, we discuss pending litigation and attorney-client privilege matters in the Max Rock versus Planning Board case. And now, I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
You seconded?
I did, I seconded.
Are we off?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?